This meeting of the Select Board. And we will begin.
Morning and progress.
So sorry.
We will begin with public comments. Mr. Kinsler.
Couple of things, I know we're going to be very busy, but I wanted to bring these to the board's attention. With your permission to distribute documents to the board and the clerk?
Sure.
That is okay.
We will most likely take up any action that you would like at another meeting.
Oh, yeah. These are informational things. And if members would take just one of these pages in one of these documents.
Okay.
Essentially, we've had the MS-1 come out in the old and new report.
Right.
And it's generated three questions, as far as I can see. If you compare the MS-1 from last year to this year, there's only a three-tenths of one percent difference of an increase in the entire town value in this time of enormously rising real estate crisis. So I am curious about that.
Okay.
Second of all, looking at the old to new report again, the biggest changes are in utility valuations. And those changes amount to about a million three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in assessed valuation of properties. And I simply don't know where that where that comes from and why there should have been a million three written off for utilities this year. And finally, took a look at recent sales and assessed value versus what things sold for. And that's the second document I pass out with the yellow highlighting. Yeah, and again, in brief, there's an eleven million dollar difference between what things have sold for and what things are assessed at. You know, this is the old Ebert Durkman quote, a million here and a million there. Eventually, you're talking about real money. So I'm curious about how to understand. And differences on the high end. There are at least three properties, maybe four, I don't remember the sheet perfectly, where there's a million dollar difference between how things are assessed and what they sold for. And that pops open my eyes a little bit and says, what's go, how do we account for this? So I'd appreciate the board looking at these and responding when they can.
Okay, thank you. We shall do that. Perhaps we could even ask our assessor to write up something in response to those.
I was gonna say, if Phil comes in that office, he can have a response to every single one of them. That's right. I said, if you come see us in the office, we have a response, probably can respond to every single one of them.
Okay.
Okay. Lynn, I encourage you to bring your questions during this session, so you're next.
My name is Lynn Partial, and I am co-president of the Utility Club. And I'm here on their behalf this morning. The Utility Club would like permission to put up some fall decorations by the canon on the green, specifically hay bales, pumpkins, gourds, and chrysanthemums. We have money in our budget to pay for this. We will take responsibility for putting it there, keeping the plants water, taking it down. We'd like to put them up in late September, early October, and take them down in early November. We think this will be nice for people from the town who drive by and see, you know, some holiday, fall holiday spirit on the green, for people who are driving through town, enjoying our local scenery, and for people who are coming to our Q show, which is going to be October 12th and 13th at the Academy Building.
Excellent. How do we feel about that?
That sounds wonderful to me.
Okay, then. All those in favor say aye. And I suppose I should have said if anyone else wishes to comment on that, but I think it's a great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your patience. Okay. You're just.
You got something on the floor while your foot going.
Those are my keys.
Do we have folks?
Just Jordan.
Just Jordan.
Hi, Jordan.
Well, not just Jordan, but yes, Jordan.
And, okay, Dan, let's move right.
I actually had a request. I'm here on behalf of my wife also for the Utility Club. She's having a dental procedure today, so.
Lucky.
Yes, so she, I don't know where she'd rather be. This question is a follow-up to the discussion last time about trees on the common. There was to be an RFC, RFP put together. I wonder where that stands and how soon could we see it?
It's in early draft form.
All right.
And I'm hopeful that we will get it finalized in draft form. And since we only meet every two weeks, I told Lena that she could send it to each of us individually, we can make comments, she put them into it, and I hope we can get it sent out before the next meeting.
That'd be great. Will there be an opportunity for members of the public to see that before it comes to your final vote?
I hadn't anticipated that. We could delay it till the next meeting, and then we could have it here if you wanted to see it. I'm not sure. We don't normally get a lot of interaction on our drafts, but.
I mean.
Well, when we get a proposal, there would be public input at that point.
A proposal definitely would be public, yeah. But he's talking about the draft RFP.
Yeah.
I'm gonna speak for Lynn and say, yes, she might be interested to see it. So if that was possible, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Think about it. I'm anxious to get it out and get it going, so I'd rather not hold it up, but. Jim, did you, you had a request.
He's here for later.
Oh, for later?
Ten fifteen. Energy committee.
Yeah, I jumped, I jumped right over that, thank you. Well, it is ten fifteen.
It goes to it, that's right. I don't know if you have any other public comment, though.
Do we have other public comment? Michael?
No.
You just had nothing to do this morning? I'm gonna put the Smiths off. I know you wanted to give us an update. But let's take up the ten fifteen, the energy committee charge.
Thank you. The energy committee charge is a three-year charge. So this is actually a four-month overdue, but changed the mission. The mission stays the same except for that second sentence. And I think, you know, you've given everybody a copy of that, so.
Yes.
It's basically states are in intent to help the town move towards its goal of clean renewable, hundred percent reliance on clean renewable electricity by 2030, which was voted in the March 2020 town meeting. The third sentence is the same as it was in the last mission statement.
So, and when you say the town, you mean individuals as well as municipal buildings?
Yeah.
I like the concept. I'm not sure that legally we can do that. David, did you have a chance to read the?
Yeah, I did. I looked at it, but I'm not finding it.
We should probably run this by Naomi or someone and make sure that there's not a legal impediment, and then come back to it.
Okay.
Well, the.
Yes, sir.
It would seem to me the appropriate verb is helping, so I'm not sure where the legal aspect might come.
Just a statute, there's a New Hampshire statute that sort of defines energy commissions and sets out what they're supposed to do. I don't, I just don't know what the rules are. It's probably fine, but.
Well, we have an energy committee. It's not an energy commission, so. That's the difference. And I think that, you know, adding in, which I can't, here I am, can't find the piece of paper that I need. I think that the town meeting vote that voted to go towards that is certainly a statement. And really, this is just saying that.
You're expanding.
Will help people do this. It doesn't mean that the residents have to.
No, we know that, no. But I was thinking in terms of fundraising or getting, if there are any, thank you.
It's okay with legal.
Yeah.
I have just one question. It's pretty all-encompassing, and there's no definition that goes along with it. I've always had reservations about burning wood chips as renewable energy or pellets. They've become a commodity, and you cut a forest that stores carbon in order to create carbon to go back into the forest. I don't see that as a net zero. And often, that commodity is being sold to Europe and other places. So a definition of what you consider to be, you know, clean energy to use solar and wind and things like that, but cutting trees to create clean energy is not.
We could certainly take a shot at that. I think if you recall the March 2020 meeting when this was brought up, it's kept vague simply because the goal line keeps moving. So twenty years ago, burning pellets was considered to be a step in the right direction. And now the scientific community would agree with you then. It's not, not only because of the carbon dioxide, but because of the carbon.
Sequestration, yes.
So, you know, will change, but there are certain, it's trying to get towards that. And I'm not sure, I think the more specific you get, the more locked in you get perhaps to complaints, difference opinions. This is not, we're not trying to force anything on anybody, but.
We had the issue last time when the highway department was, they wanted to put a pellet burner back in there, which was taking the time of the highway people. It actually, it would flood, snuff itself out, and then create a whole bunch of work for the highway department members. We ended up going with propane simply because it was more efficient for the highway members, and we buy propane pretty cheaply. So we're faced with that kind of decision.
Sure. Well, the same thing happened, you know, the energy committee raised a considerable amount of money to put solar panels on the firehouse. But when we got to the point where there were several.
Firehouse wouldn't hold them.
No, it could hold them, but there are several, not all, but some solar panels installed on fire stations in the state of New Hampshire that messed up the radio frequency. So then we had to pivot. So I think this is just going to be the next twenty years as we figure out how to make this transition. So we're not set in our ways, but we're, we'd like to add this to our mission just because it keeps us focused on that particular part.
Concepts are fine as long as they don't interfere with practicality.
Yes.
Jed.
Just this public comment to this subject. You're saying hundred percent renewables?
Yes.
In this proposal?
Clean renewable.
Clean renewable. And this has been mentioned, it's all encompassing. Does this, this is the town, town buildings, residents, everyone, or is this? In other words.
Yes.
All residents, all, you know, the town garage, the town offices, everything would be, would be powered by renewables? That's the end game, that's the goal?
The end game is, that's the goal, because, and of course, the further we get there, you know, the better. I don't think we ever intended to say by 2030, we'll be there or else. It's just, that's the goal.
Yeah, that's the goal. I don't believe that that's even possible. I mean, where, what level are we at currently? Like fifteen, twenty percent, maybe twenty-five percent at best?
At best. State of New Hampshire.
So you've got a seventy-five percent increase that you have to match by 2030, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's physically possible. There's not enough, as Ben mentioned, you know, biomass, you're doing that, and then you deforest the place. Well, solar panels and wind turbines can certainly be supplemental, but not everyone's gonna want a windmill in their backyard. As we know, in the state of New Hampshire, that's been a huge controversy, huge.
Thanks, Jed. I'm gonna cut you off. I appreciate your comments, but we actually have an appointment at eleven thirty.
Just a little, just a little public comment, as a consideration.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
I think that folks kind of know that. I'm gonna suggest, I think we're in favor of the change, but it's been quite a while since the charge to the committee has actually been looked at. I think we'll send it to legal and have it look, because it's a good opportunity to maybe do some more cleaning up or additions or edits, if that's okay with the committee. So. To legal, I would hope we could bring it back by next meeting and look at that, the language they want, and see if there's something else that needs to be added or corrected. And. Very good. Now, it's almost ten thirty. Is Stan gonna be?
Thanks, Jim.
Yes, well, he's playing the nine.
Okay, let's, I know that Ray Clark. Ray is here, and the Smiths are here. So why don't we, if we can do this in five or ten minutes, I would like to go ahead. You had asked to speak to us, Ray.
Instead, I'm just gonna present some written comments, and you can review them at your leisure.
Okay. Thanks.
Let me bring them up.
Thank you. And do you have a copy of those for us, Ray, as well?
I don't.
Perhaps we could get a copy?
Okay. Do you folks have something for us?
We don't have anything written.
Five-minute update?
Sure, I mean, I can start if that's okay. Well, we've made tremendous, tremendous progress. We have the Guss Pond Road property almost all cleaned up. There's just a little bit left to do. And in recent weeks, we've also made a great deal of progress at the Dorchester Road property. We have had five vehicles leave, and we are in the process of prepping several more to leave. And we have had numerous dumpster loads, and some of that's metal, and some of it's trash. But a lot has been laid into the properties, and so we feel we're making really good progress. And we have some momentum going now. It's interesting, we've had an incredible groundswell of public support since the Valley News article came out. And it turns out that there are a lot of people in the community who didn't even know about the situation, and who have said they wish they had known sooner because they would have been helping us already. But they are now going, they are helping us, and are going to continue to help us.
Great.
So we're very happy for that.
Thank you. Jed, did you wanna add to that?
Yes, so specifically, we have removed from the property three forty-yard dumpster loads of, you know, construction materials and other debris, three large dump trailer loads of light iron, two large truckloads of junk tires, and numerous other things. And also, a bunch of volunteers have removed just general trash and various things. And as a matter of fact, as Mom mentioned, we've had just dozens and dozens of people that are actually showing up, getting their gloves on, and actually doing the work. And these people have committed to continuing to do this as we move forward. They're on board, they're gonna, they're gonna see this through to completion. And interestingly enough, many of the volunteers that have shown up have, every day that they arrive, they find something cool and say, hey, can I have this? And I'm like, absolutely, you know, so I've been giving them cool little things that they find that they can use. So I found that very, very interesting, and it's, it's just been overwhelming, the outpouring of positive support I've gotten since the article in the paper.
Wonderful.
Just absolutely incredible. And the actual, not just, not just support, somebody stating as support, but actual physical help in expediting the cleanup job. And our momentum now has just kicked into high gear, and it's been just incredible, so.
Excellent. That's really, really good to hear.
It is, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are probably in a, going to look to make an appointment to come and visit this one Select Board member. I got the short straw. And so we'll let you know when that date is.
Yeah, and I'm, only attendant mentioned the letter. We could, you're gonna send out a letter, and then we'll move forward and.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
That sounds great. Very good, thank you.
So, I just have a question about that, that it doesn't have to be a quorum?
No.
Okay. That's a point of.
It's not a select board meeting, it's just, it's not a select board meeting.
It's just a, okay.
If a quorum is there, then it is a meeting.
I see, oh, okay.
I remember, yeah.
I understand the distinction, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay. Super, thank you for coming in, giving us the update, Ray.
Thank you for your time.
Can we get the copy of that?
Yes, Jordan, now calm down and grab it.
We asked George to come, and she'll make a copy.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes. Oh. Okay. Dean, can carry it to the board?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay. Then. We have, thanks Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
I think it's a great idea, by the way.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, thank you for the interview, and thank you for the energy.
One of, one of several, but thank you for saying that.
I also, just one quick comment, I also wanted to thank Ray and all the group of volunteers for their incredible efforts and their work. And it's been tremendous outpouring of support, and we very much appreciate it.
They stepped right in, and that got us going, and.
They weren't over.
Really, filled our hearts with gratitude.
I could pose a quick question to the Smiths.
Yes.
If, if we were to pause our moving forward on this on the Select Board side, when do you think you'll be done?
Well, what, Kim had suggested, Kim Williams, I think you might know her. She had suggested that we go for another month and then reassess where we are, and see if we need to do anything more at that point, or if we're done. And I thought that seemed logical, sensible, because we do have the Guss Pond Road, the property just about finished.
I can say the momentum has been incredible, so.
Yeah.
And one thing that I feel is very important is, now that we have this momentum, we and the volunteers have to continue this momentum, we have to keep it up and see this thing to completion, so. It's very important.
Thank you very much. So I mean, that was, that was Kim's suggestion, and it seemed to make sense.
We've got the ball rolling, we gotta, we gotta keep it going, we gotta keep the momentum, and just keep it up until it's finished.
And I'll just say, it's encouraging, like when Ray and Kim and the other volunteers stepped right in to help us, it just kind of made us feel like somebody cared.
Yep.
And we weren't alone.
Sometimes the most difficult thing.
I think that's something that kind of gets you going, when you feel like, gosh, what, what, what am I gonna do? It just was.
Thank you, I understand, we all understand. And I would hate to cut you off, but.
Gotta continue the meeting.
Our ten thirty is here, and.
I think we're all set.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Enjoy the beautiful weather. That's another thing that's been a real blessing, we had a lot of great weather lately.
Yes, that has been a help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
So we have Mr. Lawton and your bodyguard.
How you doing? Just in case.
The boss came.
The boss, yeah. We went all the way to the top.
And for purpose of the recording, and anyone else who's here, this has to do with the covered bridge, the Edgel Bridge on the north.
Why don't you pull up front and center.
And so we are looking at a contract. And. I think we would like to add one paragraph to it. David, would you like to explain what?
Oh, yeah, I just added a cooperation paragraph that says that the parties will cooperate with each other. We'll use reasonable business efforts to cooperate with each other if there's a need for information or other, anything else having to do with the contract. In my practice, before I moved out, before I, when I was still a lawyer, I had instances where people got into bad feelings, and then someone would ask for some paperwork or some help filling out a tax form, and the other side'd go, ah, no, I'm not helping you.
Yeah, we're one team, we're gonna be one team. So that's, that's not a problem.
I just, it isn't really even directed to you, it's just something I'd like to see added to all of the contracts that the town enters into. So I added a little paragraph that just says the parties will use reasonable business efforts to cooperate with any reasonable request for information or other assistance relating to the contract or the subject matter of the contract.
Is that, I can show you a copy of it if you'd like to see it. And by the way, we are all quite excited.
Yeah, thank you guys for doing this, it's cool to have.
Oh, did you get it? I'm sorry. Does that show it?
Cooperation, that's all.
This shows the cross out on that Jordan printed this, but, yeah, just that, that was added, that's all.
All right, and I do have one thing that we've got to.
And it goes both ways. If you needed something, we couldn't say, no, you can't have it. If we need a tax form or something, help filling out any, you know, we're getting contributions, we need to provide some information to the charity that's helping us, we could, come you and ask for that, couldn't say, no, that's not part of the deal.
Article five under the insurance. My insurance agent caught up with this, errors and omissions, that's mostly to do with the design, and you've got that through Ekman Engineering. I don't do, I consult, I don't do the designing. So the errors and omissions coverage would be under the design phase, which Ekman Engineering is taking care of. So I just want to remove that from.
Are we getting a contract from Ekman, or is it?
No, you've already got his insurance policy covering the errors and omissions for the design portion.
Okay.
I've got a copy of my insurance, get the town, name of the town as additional insured.
Perfect.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
No.
Did you talk about the bond?
We did not talk about the bond.
You need to talk about the bond.
Yeah, we need to figure out what's going on with that. I didn't see that in the documents, and we've been going back and forth.
It wasn't in the original ones that Naomi sent, so I think she just assumed that we knew. Did you check in to see cost?
I, they've got my insurance agent working on it.
Okay.
Would like to see if, with counsel, if there is a way to just put a certain amount of funds in an account on the town and myself, in lieu of. A bond?
The town has done that before.
I kind of got hit by this side, you know, I didn't realize that until right off, you know, real recently when it came up.
It just came, yeah. And I know the town has done that for a couple of the projects years ago, not in recent years, but with like the bridge, one of the bridge projects with Anson and one of the.
So we would essentially take, get a new joint account where money is placed in it?
And we'd have to figure out how much. And we'd have to figure out how much.
We could figure out, yeah.
Because if we look at the payment schedule, so if the town wasn't getting ahead of me or I wasn't getting ahead of the town on what is, as a progress payments go, because the first is a big chunk, because materials are two to three months out, so I need to get rolling on that so we can move on. That's the first big chunk. And then the rest of it, you know, I don't know if there's a dollar value that we can come up with that would work.
So I guess I'm confused because usually the bond would be, if there was a performance satisfactory to the town.
Yes.
And I don't think we need to bond ourselves, I mean, we make our payments, I don't think we ever not make payments.
Right, I mean, and we've never not completed a project.
Yeah.
But, you know, we just did a few years ago, we did a $2.8 million project in New York State and there was no bond on it.
Do you know what was it, was it council telling us that we needed to have a bond requirement in this, or remind me what she said?
It's, there's actually an RSA, RSA four four seven colon sixteen, bond required.
Say it again, what's the...
Four hundred and forty-seven, sixteen. And it's for anything over a certain amount of money, has to have a bond equal to at least 100% of the contracted price or of the estimated cost of work.
And so your request is that you don't want to do the bond because bond companies are a pain in the neck and you want to just deposit money in an account in lieu of a bond?
Yeah, I'm looking into my options right now with that.
So the only reason we're doing this is because our council told us that the statute says we have to.
Yeah.
So, and that we can't do like you did in New York and just wait. So let us check with her and see if we can take a deposit in an account in lieu of a bond, if that meets the requirements of New Hampshire law. If it does, I think we'd be fine accommodating whatever you want to do. If it doesn't, then our hands are kind of tied, we have to follow along.
Right, yeah, I get that. And but is this is a, an emergency project?
Yes.
So I don't know whether the state law allows any leniency on...
Let us check with council.
That would be...
Sorry, that's why standard response is to defer and ask the attorneys.
Oh yeah, no, 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 I get it, I get it, so.
So we're gonna ask legal about a bond. In the meantime, can we...
That's okay with you, I will.
That, yes. Can we, can we sign this contract so that you can start beginning to do what you need to do? Or can we not?
You can sign it and agree to pay the first payment, which includes the start of it. You just have to hold out. You've done that before.
Okay.
All right, in a couple of weeks, we will be coming out with a full set of plans and put on a presentation with the engineer so that we'll be able to a lot of question answers and questions. But I'm just trying to jump ahead a little bit to get the ball moving. He doesn't have his final...
We're gonna miss the weather window if we put it off too much longer.
It'd be really nice if we could get these diagrams put up.
I knew you were gonna say that.
You will, you'll have a full set.
If the plotter was working, I could.
Sort of running inside.
Oh, all right.
It's an inside joke. I'm looking at your payment schedule, so you could today,
Yes.
if Stan is okay with this, sign and okay the $250,000 start, which is mobilization and materials and things like that, then that would be fair to get you going.
Yeah.
I would like to know that we sign the contract, make the first payment and agree that we will come to a meeting of the minds as to what legal says, whether we can bond or do something different.
Yes.
I'll second Ben on it.
David on it. It may be that you do need a bond and we just don't have any room, so you should, I would suggest that you talk to whoever you talk to and see what that's gonna cost.
Right, because I didn't have that dollar value in the contract.
So just touch base with me the minute you find out what it is.
And if you find that there's any...
Yeah.
Ability to...
Ability to, for an exception because of the emergency plan, so.
Excellent. Okay, so you have, we have a revised contract? And we have two copies of it?
No, actually, never mind, it still says draft on it.
Okay.
It does say draft, because I was waiting for your council to say that if all of the...
Whatever.
I can have Jordan take draft offer and you can...
If she could do that, then we can sign it while you're here and you can get a copy and we'll have a copy here and we can start.
Yep.
So then what happens, the contract as written has the drug, the bonding language in it?
No.
No.
Not this contract.
So then we don't want to sign it if, because, I mean, we can't do that then, because then we're signing an agreement and having to go back and fix it. Yeah, if council tells us that that's not legal.
Oh, I was looking, I was thinking of this one, which is his construction thing, that you could approve that and approve the first payment and move ahead on that.
Sure.
And then the contract can come after we know whether it has the bond language in it or not.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll work on my end just in case there's no exception because it's an emergency and as soon as you find out definitively one way or the other, that'll guide me on.
So I think if you guys just sign the bottom of that and then he can sign the bottom of that and Jordan can make a copy. Oh, sorry, I know.
Don't worry. No, oh, sorry.
Don't go.
Yes, don't go.
Thank you.
Now you see the real brains behind the wall.
Just the printer.
And then Stan needs...
And Ben.
Ben needs to sign that too.
Did Ben come up with that?
What a surprise.
He brought one down this time.
Oh, I have an extra one.
And then Jordan will be happy to make you a copy.
Yes.
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, we have two manifests, one or five.
You're all done with Stan then?
I think we are.
I'm good.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem. Look forward to it.
Thank you for coming in and thank you for taking on this project and we look forward to it.
Thank you for fixing our bridge.
Yes.
Nice to finally meet you face to face after all the emails and phone calls over the years and YouTube parent.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Take care.
Talk to you later.
Two manifests.
Okay, good.
One for $500,000, which is a school manifest, and the other, which is a regular manifest for $80,732 and 17 cents, all set?
You guys couldn't...
I think we might be gonna wanna talk to both of you here in a minute, if that's okay.
I don't wanna stay after class, all right?
You're already in the back there.
So I'll move both manifests.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
David on it.
Judy, I, okay, the manifests are approved. All right, Sean and Scotty. We've had a little chit chat a lot of serve lately, I'm guessing that's why Scotty is here and Sean and...
I came for the public...
You came for the character?
Came just to be here, that's all.
Oh, okay. Well, I had asked Dana when everything got finished and we had all the bills in, we would have an answer as to the cost of the guardrails, so we've been answered that question. I think Sean's response has been good, in fact, I liked it a lot. We still have some people with some questions. I'm not sure if we have any more specific answers, except I do know that we did, we talked about the project, we talked about how people would get in and out of the parking lot and the ambulance would come in. Believe that we have looked at those safety issues.
Yes.
If you correct me if I'm mistaken.
And I'll just, I'll just say again that, you know, I mean, the guardrails were placed not only for safety but road preservation. And how Dartmouth and the Dartmouth skiway configure their parking lot, that onus is on them. I mean, that is their private property, it's not for us or the town to come up with a plan for them. You know, I mean, they've got options and that's what they have to figure out. But our priority is to make sure that not only people using the road and driving the road who live here are safe and don't have to worry about vehicles and as many pedestrians, but the hundreds of vehicles that drive over the graph and turnpike every day, you know, it, it's just not safe. And we did what was necessary for the safety of the road.
I have a good question, I've been riding my bike up there lately, so I saw, are we, are we done installing guardrails there? Is that project completed?
Right there. We gotta fix the bank on the other side.
Was there any thought about installing guardrails on the other side of the road too, to sort of delineate where the, where the culvert and the bank is or is that...
I just plan on putting delineator markers out and probably no bargaining signs.
Okay.
That's what, I mean...
You know, I won't get too concerned about the comments, because if any change is gonna create comments and how it plays out over the winter, you know, at very least Dartmouth could start trucking students up there in buses and alleviate a lot of the parking issues, so. And there's places that they can meet to get on buses that are closer.
Well, I believe they did say in their meeting that that's what they were gonna start doing anywhere.
Yeah, they did, we had a meeting and they were here and we're okay with it, so.
Do we have a follow-up meeting to talk to them about taxes and others?
You have a meeting with them in October to talk about that kind of stuff and, you know...
We should add this to the agenda on that meeting, you know, the sort of skiway status parking, maybe.
Of what they're gonna do, well, yeah, I think that's gonna be part of it, but I think part of the problem, not I don't think, but part of what I was hearing from some of the lister people, not necessarily on the lister, but emailed to me, was they knew nothing about it. Well, you know, I tried to explain that, you know, we, we send out as a news and announcement and people can get on the web, our website and click the thing, so they get information.
This is on every agenda, it's probably circulating.
I was gonna say, we're not gonna send out, you know, a townwide mailing for something that comes up.
Well, we have, our road agent doesn't need approval from the public. He sees what needs to be done to maintain the roads and keep everybody safe. And that would just be really onerous at this point.
Those are the sort of requests about people who don't follow the agenda and don't look at the, don't come to select board meetings or don't even review the minutes or anything and then say, why wasn't I informed?
Well, don't forget, we have recordings also, you know, the minutes are, the meetings are recorded.
And Rick foots mouth?
I try, I do try.
It might be useful to have one or both of you guys when we actually meet with Dartmouth.
Oh, I think they should both be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're supposed to follow up with the drainage and stuff, wouldn't they? And there's been no, no communication on that, so.
So I think it's easy, only a part to forget.
Well, and in order to get that project done, we need that info.
Yeah.
There was a kerfuffle on the list about somebody getting rich and how was this funded and was it put out to bid, blah, blah. So just I think the board at some point might wanna respond to the kerfuffle or say that they're not going to respond to that, that this is just average daily business and, and, you know, this was just something that had to be done. But there were intimations that someone was getting rich or something.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
I'd like to know who.
Yeah, yeah, I know, none of us.
Our real man.
Secretly did.
I know, we're very, very company leaders.
Swash funds.
The other thing I did was I explained to a few of them that the listerv is not a place for us as employees and the board to have discussions. They just, you can't do it. And we have, we have a policy about that.
We're allowed to go on as private individuals.
Certainly.
It's a...
But the board doesn't go on.
Right, you guys can't get on there and answer a hundred questions, so.
Yeah, well, we can think about if we want to make an exception, but it is pretty standard that we have road projects every year and we follow procedures and...
My inclination is that anyone who's unhappy and thinks that there's something uncoordinated going on, we should invite them to come in or select coordinating and make a public comment and we just talk to them.
They can be thrilled with how exciting it is.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
None of this is out of the ordinary for any change that takes place.
Okay.
Have you excused?
You're excused.
There was on the wooden bridge, there was, there is gonna be some extra and I meant to talk to Dana, see what the extra was, but... He didn't always state what it was.
Do you remember what the original amount was? I think it was 5,000, there's a couple thousand more. It's 7,861, so.
This is the one over...
That's...
This is the paving for the...
The River Road Bridge.
Bridge that you were over two years ago.
No, that you need to do now.
I know, we're doing...
Being done, right. You approved it as part of this year's stuff and you have block grant money and stuff.
I just wanted to make sure you guys knew those.
It's a little pricier than we thought.
Yeah, Mike Hanson required more.
Dana, did we get a final amount from that charitable organization that was so nice about raising funds for the Edgel Bridge? Do we know what that, what that brought in or not yet?
Yeah, they fundraised seven, oh, gosh, now I can't remember exactly, a little over 7,000 and then they kicked in 10, so.
Wow, so almost 20 grand.
Seventeen something?
Seventeen something, yeah.
Have we sent them a thank you or any kind of thing like that?
I did and I meant to grab a card for you guys to do that, but yeah, he came here, we met, I gave him a nice card and it was, it's been...
It's gonna be like an official, something more thank you.
I will do one from you guys, bring it in so you can sign it.
That would be great, okay.
And I promised him a picture of the job when it's done.
Maybe a couple is ongoing.
We should have asked Mr., we should have asked Mr. Stan about that, about, I mean, that would be something that would be really nice is that he could take progress pictures and send them to us that we could put up on the town website and sort of show, you know, beginning, progress, working on and then completing.
And post them on the wall.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an inside joke, but there was, there was pictures of the Connecticut River.
Oh, yes.
Talking about banks and he, he got more mileage out of sitting there watching that picture and then it got taken down off.
Wouldn't I join much over the years, the iteration of the...
Yeah. Okey doke, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks guys.
We have a few things to do and then we're supposed to be presenting the Boston Post came.
I thought you could...
We can, the Hanover ambulance agreement. We've been asked if we would waive, um, let me start this over. So our attorney has been asked by Hanover to review Hanover's ambulance agreements with Norwich and Lyme. Our attorney also worked with Hanover, so we have been asked if we would waive any potential conflict. We don't have to do this, but I have worked in both Hanover and here in Lyme with this attorney, with this legal counsel group and never seen a conflict.
Isn't that Mitchell Minus? Isn't that Mitchell municipal?
Mitchell municipal, so I'm certainly comfortable waiving that and letting them look at these agreements and advise.
Which agreement is this, this is?
Well, they're, it's the, it's the, uh, ambulance agreement that we have with Hanover, um, maybe signed once and then it goes on.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, I.
She's rewriting, they are changing and rewriting their contract. So she's doing that work and she's our attorney, so she doesn't wanna give us a legal opinion on it. That would be a conflict unless you waive this.
So we're waiving.
Well, so, but wait a minute, here's what I don't want, I don't want us to be in a position, we don't have four dozen, four different law firms we can go to on stuff like this. So I just wanna make sure we're not in a position where when we get this new contract and are asked to sign it and we go to our counsel and say, hey, is this okay? She says, I can't advise you on that, I advise the town of Hanover about it, I, I represent them.
She just asked us to do this. She said, if you waive this, then she can write it for Hanover and give you an opinion for Lyme. I don't know if you wanna do that or not, but that's the question.
Yeah, I don't know either, but, but, but yeah, I want, as long as, as long as that, as long as we're comfortable with that, it's okay.
She is specifically asking that.
Okay.
Ben moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, David, aye.
And Judy, aye.
So the answer is yes, you're waiving.
Yes, we are waiving exclusivity, I guess.
Okay.
And?
Dina, would you just, to placate me, confirm with her that she will be able to continue to advise us with respect to this contract after she's?
It's right in the email, but yeah, I'll resend that for you, yes.
There. Um, oh, this is the bond. This is this.
Yeah, but this doesn't, this isn't clear enough for me. I want her to tell us that after she's, after this waiver and after we're done, she can continue to advise us about this.
I don't know why you would have the same person that's writing the contract for another town look at your contract.
Well, who else are we gonna get?
Well, you would have to find a separate attorney, but, I mean, I don't know. That seems like a, I mean, it is a conflict.
Yeah.
It says it's a conflict, but I guess if, you know, I don't know, it's not about trust, that's not what I mean.
Well, I think Hanover and Lyme have had this arrangement for a long time.
Yes, they have.
And that law firm has represented both these towns also for a long time.
I know.
I do.
Yeah.
And I think she's not gonna recommend anything that she wouldn't recommend for us.
I wouldn't think so.
So I for one am comfortable with it, but we can always go out and ask some other attorney for one time to look at the agreement if that makes you more comfortable.
Yeah, well, if we have to sign a new agreement, we're gonna wanna get legal review and I wanna make sure that either somebody at Mitchell Municipal can do that or that.
Yeah, I would think that we could actually go to a different attorney at Mitchell Municipal.
Of course, right.
Joe, we're.
That's the other thing, right? Nora, Chris.
All right.
And could you, could you please just confirm that for me, that, that, that they'll be able to do that? Somebody else can help us if we need help with respect to this new.
I will make sure she gives out exact verbiage, yes, I will. I get it.
Okay, moving right along.
You guys haven't done the, um, minutes from the last one?
No, we have not done the minutes. Because I wanna open the revow bids and we have, oh, we moved these so we can sign these. Um, we have an expanded list of office, oath of office people. So we need to do both of those things and we need to schedule Tuesday's attendance at the polls, so.
And you can always physically come back and sign them, but if you vote them, then it's done.
Yes, so.
Dina, I have a question about the, the manifest for the school. So whenever we get an amount from the school, it all just says school and then there's this big giant total and we never see any sort of breakdown. Is there a, a school?
We don't have, we don't have any business with.
I, I know we don't, but I, just out of my own.
breakdowns are is the total of what you've paid them, or the town has paid them?
Yeah, I mean, it just, the manifest just gives an amount that we're paying over to the school district.
Right, right.
Does, on, on the school district side, did they publish a, a breakdown or is there a?
I get a schedule from.
And is that available to the public or how, like if someone wants to look and see where this half million dollars is going?
I think what you're asking.
Oh, that, that, they would have manifests just like you do individual manifests.
And that gets approved by the school board and so you could go to a school board meeting and ask them what they have?
You can. The school board signs it and then the treasurer signs out the checks and it's just like, same as our procedure, but you can request to see any manifest, manifest anytime.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yep, Ben?
Sure.
Everyone's throwing them.
Um, for the oath of office, inspectors of the election.
Where are they?
Valid clerks.
They're valid clerks, I don't know why they call them inspector of the elections, but they're valid clerks, they sit there and check people in.
We have.
All right, well, they changed the name.
Ellen, Ellen Parrish, Emily Alderboran, Laurel Ross, Kim Williams, Teresa Berlison, Kristen Burdick also, Deputy Town Clerk Karen Borgstrom, Assistant Town Clerk Patricia Jenks, Assistant Town Clerk Katie Jenks, Assistant Moderator Deborah Killam, Assistant Moderator Kevin Peterson, Assistant Moderator William Waist. Uh, I will move that we confirm these oaths of office. We've got a whole pile, we can sign at some later time. I need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, Ben, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, they are approved and I'm pushing the minutes to the last thing.
Pretty slow.
Yeah, I do, let's, um, open those bids.
Okay. Uh, Avatar sent a letter, sorry, they don't have the manpower time to do it. Too much workload for them to do either one.
This is the, um, revow.
This is the two, the two different, right.
I'm sorry, who, who was that we did that?
Avatar.
Okay.
This is Tyler Technology. You see, at the opportunity, after reviewing your request, decided not to respond.
Responded, no response.
Right.
Guess that's one step ahead of the just posting.
Yeah.
At least they wrote back, we sent out however many and only heard back from three, four.
Who's this from?
Me in writing. This is Vision, which is our software company. Okay, uh, this is for the full reevaluation. Hmm. Wow.
I hope there's a letter in there instead of a book.
I hope there's a price.
Yeah.
Let's see, it's the only problem, sorry. Can't review it ahead of time. So I know where the price is. Ninety-five thousand dollars.
That's for full, Dina?
Full revaluation.
That's the full revaluation.
This is, this is the full statistical revaluation. And this envelope does not wanna open.
Do you need scissors? Do I have an answer?
No, I think I'm all set.
Looks like Christmas.
Use my muscles.
Looks like Christmas.
That's right. Okay.
Is that also Vision?
Yes, it's also Vision, yes, they both came in the same package. And this is forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Forty-six nine?
Yes.
So what are the two figures again, Dina, I'm sorry?
Ninety-five thousand.
That's for the full.
For the full and the full statistical, it's forty-six nine. And that's all you have?
Nothing from Todd?
He doesn't have time to do a full revaluation, so he said.
Jeez, who's the law better?
He said that he was not, well, you only have one, you know. Um, it doesn't mean you pick that one, you know, if you wanna put it back out again, if you wanna wait, I don't know.
I think we were lucky to get one.
I think you were really lucky to get one, from what I understand and what I'm hearing from other towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, Todd just said he doesn't have the manpower to, to do a full one. I mean, I don't know, he probably could do a statistical one, but he didn't feel like it was, like he should just bid on one and not, not do both that you asked for, so.
So obviously the, the number is something that's significant in these and, and we've announced what those are, but really you have to sort of parse through these agreements and figure out what they say or what the proposal says and what they're, what, what they're offering up.
Right.
And none of the three of us have any particular expertise in evaluating appraisal agreements or appraisal proposals. I wonder if Todd would be willing to look at these as our town appraiser and tell us whether he thinks that they're satisfactory or they're missing stuff or they're, you know.
I was gonna say, I, I need time to go through and make sure they haven't left out any, any of the requirements.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as getting an opinion from Todd, well.
I'm not.
Not an opinion, but.
Yeah, just a, yeah.
I mean, that's up to you guys.
Advice, I don't know. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Um, well, I don't think we, if we're going to do it, we don't have much choice. Then it's just between a, a statistical or a full. I think you know that I think we should do the full, but, um.
The cost difference is not particularly material.
I don't, I don't think so. I would like to look through those as well and I suspect if they're in the office, the public could come in and look through them as well.
Absolutely. And you.
Just point of information, the trust funds have about sixty-three thousand dollars in there already to cover the cost of, of revaluation, so, um, which, i- if you went with the bigger one, it would mean about thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, yep.
And then you guys could, you know, review it and maybe, you know, address it in two weeks or even a month. You have enough time before the whole budget cycle.
Yeah, we have enough time.
Do, do these proposals say anything obvious about when we have to respond by?
I haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
I know, I'm just.
Well, let's tentatively see if we can get in and look at them in the next two weeks or at the very most in the next four weeks. And, um, Dina can look through it and tell us if there's a drop dead date for a response. And, um, we need to make a decision.
Dina, do you have a way to scan those and email them afterwards or is that gonna be, now I'm taking from your expression, it's not easy.
They're not, well, they're not a take apart book. If it was one of those two, two, two ones, that would be good, but that means.
Do you think we could reach out to Vision and ask them if they could send us an electronic copy of the two proposals?
Have to copy every single one of them, I can ask them.
If they could do that, that would save us a bunch of time and it would make it easier for the three of us to sort of page through these at, at home. And then thank them for responding too, I mean.
Yeah. That's it, that's a really good suggestion.
No, really, you're, yeah, you are really lucky. I was very surprised when we got one from Vision. That looked like it was thick enough that it really was a bid.
Was a bid, yeah, not a.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Right.
Um, okay.
But there's a lot to it, yeah, I have to find out, you know, how much, yeah, anyways, that entry and all that stuff.
Phil has a question or a comment?
I'm sorry.
Uh, just, a, a point of information, I know that, uh, a former select board member, Rusty Keith, has studied these reevaluation issues, uh, extensively to the point where they bore me to tears. Uh, and if we wanted some sort of, of opinion from someone other than Todd about.
Yeah.
Is, are these covering the right bases, asking Rusty to have a look. Doesn't cost us anything and you can take his opinion one way or another, um, but it's somebody with a lot of expertise.
Thank you for that suggestion. Michael, you look like you wanna say something? No, okay, um, I think that what we will do probably is make our own independent decisions on them. And I think the fewer entities with input, the better off we are. We can, if we make a mistake, it's ours, rather not have a lot of, um, other people having.
My view is that we, if we can get these in digital form, it would be nice to be able to make them available to any members of the public who wanna review them and people have reviewed them and wanna come to us with comments, that's fine.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I agree with you that we shouldn't be soliciting outside parties other than maybe our appraiser to, to review them. But it'd be really cool if they would send us a PDF of these things instead of us having to do it, 'cause that's gonna take you half a day, right?
Well, Jordan.
Not me, but little Jordan, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, she can make copies of all of them and do it, but it would be.
Okay.
I'll see what they can do.
So, I'm gonna ask the board at this, well, I know we still have the minutes. Let's just do the minutes and then I have a.
I'm open.
Okay?
And I'm staying.
Okay.
'Cause I couldn't participate in the meeting, I was.
Oh, yeah, we're way away, okay. That's correct, you.
You're on the road.
I forgot to call you on Tuesday, I'm sorry.
That, uh, no, 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 it's not your fault, but our, our, um, conference calling equipment doesn't work in my, at least in my experience. What happens is it cuts out, so you can, you hear one word out of every ten and, uh, I don't know what we're using for that, just that phone.
It was this phone, but we have this other conference phone, but it wasn't hooked up and I didn't know, I don't know anything about it.
I, I can only buy the used conference phone.
Yeah, they were.
That one works good if it just gets hooked back up.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's a real conference phone and yes, we should do that.
It's kinda my fault, 'cause I didn't give anybody notice in advance, I just missed it, I was double booked.
On the election day, I have a doctor's appointment at one thirty, I think.
Okay.
So I'm at that, I can do either end, but not.
When is election day?
Tuesday.
This Tuesday?
Yes, the tenth.
So we got shifts.
Yeah, so, um.
Yeah, I'm wide open, so I can do whatever you want.
Okay. We need, we need, um.
What time is your appointment?
One thirty.
So we usually do seven to eleven, eleven to three, one, three to seven.
You can't do the seven to eleven, 'cause you have an appointment.
I have an appointment, right.
So I guess that's me seven to eleven or?
Do you mind seven to eleven?
I don't want to.
Okay, that'll be David.
One fifteen to two fifteen.
Okay. So.
One fifteen.
Should I get there a little early to help set stuff up too, for that?
Stuff usually sets up a day before.
Yeah, oh, I thought you meant like lug stuff in last minute, but yeah, I know, the night before at five, I think is usually when they do it, four or five.
Monday at five?
Usually playing on that.
Okay, so then I will do the, um, the eleven to three.
And I should be back by three.
And you should be back by three and that'll be Ben and then they usually need somebody to, uh, to be there while they count ballots and I usually do that. That usually comes, so. to be there while they count ballots and I usually do that. That usually comes, so. Yeah, so I'll do that seven o'clock to whenever. Okay, that sounds good. Um.
This is just the primary, so it's probably not gonna be that big of a turnout, right?
It is the primary. I don't know, 'cause there's a lot of contesting going on. Now, the last thing we have before we go to our eleven thirty appointment. I don't know actually whether we should do non-public or public to talk about the letter to the Smiths advising them of a safe visit. I think.
No.
Non-public, you think?
I think, you have reputational issues, I think. Maybe.
Well, it depends on what you're gonna discuss. If you're just gonna vote on the letter that's already written, um, then you have no need to go into non-public because they, it was on the agenda and they know they're gonna get a letter. If you have other things you need to discuss that could have to do with reputation, then.
Well, it seems to me they, we, we have a question before us and that's whether we wanna allow some additional delay before we start moving forward with the cleanup and, and, and I don't know, I, it seems to me that there's a reputational element in some of those discussions.
Well, there might be a legal one too. You may need to contact your legal.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so, in that case, I, I, that was my question, whether or not we were gonna have that discussion. I will move that we go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two C, reputation, and it is eleven sixteen.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye. Judy, aye. Okay.